Welcome to our committee hearing this afternoon. So we have Maria Perez, a member of the committee, Zeta, Councilor Zeta Govan, with us this morning, myself, Sean Curran, Chairman of the State and Federal Affairs Committee, and several others from the media who are online as well. So this being 12 o'clock, I'd like to formally commence this subcommittee meeting for April 14th, 2022, the State and Federal Affairs Committee. This morning, we are joined by Denise Jordan on the Springfield Housing Authority, as well as her staff Deputy Director Nicole Kane, as well as Mr. Mr. Healy. And if Denise Jordan is there and can hear me, if you or your staff are prepared, I understand you have a presentation to start us off. I'm glad to hear it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council Perez. I spoke to everyone before you joined. I want to thank City Councilor. I want to thank Sean Curran and the members of the State and Federal Affairs Committee for the opportunity to speak to all of you about your local housing authority. As has been said, my name is Denise Jordan. I'm the Executive Director. I'm joined by my Deputy Director Nicole Kane and our Director of Capital Improvement and Procurement, Mr. John Healy. We are here today to talk about Springfield Housing Authority and to request your support to appropriate some of the city of Springfield's ARPA funding to the Springfield Housing Authority. Unlike many other local housing authorities in the state, I realize that the Springfield Housing Authority operates in a bubble somewhat because in probably the last decade or so, we haven't really reached out to our elected officials to remind them that we are here and our residents, who are your residents, need your attention and assistance. Most look at the Springfield Housing Authority as a private dual state and federal operation and forget that we are an agency tasked to provide housing for some of the city's most vulnerable populations, individuals and families deemed low income, folks with disabilities, and our seniors. SHA is the third largest public housing authority in the Commonwealth, and we're right here in Springfield. We serve over 12,000 residents. We have 2,397 units and are responsible for almost five, I'm sorry, almost 4,000 vouchers that provide income assistance for folks looking for low-income housing. Our residents, they live in Springfield, many attend Springfield Public Schools, they work in the city, and most important, they live in your districts. Many vote, and we actually house two polling locations right on our property, and we formally house the senior center to the city at no cost. Any of our residents pay attention to those issues that, those local issues that impact their quality of life. They ask questions about what's being done for them. We are thankful to the city for all of the resources and information they have provided our residents and staff during the outbreak of the COVID pandemic. From inception, the city of Springfield jumped in and made sure that our residents had information and resources, unlike many other cities and towns when I'm on the local public housing authorities calls, did not have access, and they weren't getting information. And I'm lucky and happy to report that the city of Springfield basically had our back during COVID, and I want to thank you for that. We had COVID vaccines and clinics here for our residents early on, starting with our seniors, trickling down to our employees to make sure we were safe while we were serving them. As employees of the Springfield Housing Authority, it's our job to ensure that we do all that we can to address the needs of our residents, your residents. While I take pride in the work that we do in maintaining our apartments without much capital support from the state or the feds, it's important for all of you to know that we have a multitude of aging developments with infrastructures that need upgrading and not having the resources to do so. And that's one of the reasons why we are here today, ARPA funds. After following the allocations recently given to some of the nonprofits in the city, one thing that we have in common with many of them is that we serve the same population. They serve our folks, but this is where those folks live. Looking at surrounding cities and towns, Boston and Worcester, respectively the first and second largest housing authorities in the state, we're looking at the commitment that their cities have made to supporting their local housing authorities. And we here at SHA are following suit, making an appeal to our city. In advance, we provided an overview to give you some of the information on what we do here and how we serve your residents that reside in public housing. I'm going to turn the mic over to John Healy, our Director of Capital Improvement, who will provide you with some background information to support the projects we are requesting funding for. And then at that time, we'll answer any questions that you may have. Our PowerPoint was sent. It's not a PowerPoint per se. We just sent a packet of background information. If you are received it, or you can look at it at your leisure. I, for one, I don't believe in reading PowerPoints to people because you all can read. And if you have any questions, we're here. So I'm going to turn it over to John.
Good afternoon. Like Denise said, we do have a large need for capital improvements on our aging infrastructure and our properties that are very old. I kind of broke that out in those slides. You can look at later. I'm going to probably repeat some of the stuff, but a lot of our properties were built. One of our oldest ones, 1949, in the 1950s and 1960s. So as you can imagine, some of the stuff is original and has aged. You know, it did what it was supposed to do, but we're at a period of time now where we're 60, 70 years out, where it's lived through, you know, a lot of maintenance, a lot of Band-Aids, tenants living in our units, especially with plumbing, pouring chemicals down the drains over the years, you know, cleaning that type of stuff up. So it's worn out our infrastructure for our plumbing, especially where our residents live. That gives us some, you know, health and safety issues that our staff tries to keep up with as best they can. But at some point, there needs to be a reckoning and then come to Jesus moment, if you will, to replace these systems. And if you, when you look through the slides, we get about four and a, right now, we're getting about four and a half billion dollars from the federal government, for our federal properties, which is about 18 properties. We're getting about $450,000 a year from the state. Most fluctuate, obviously, with appropriations. It's a drop in the bucket for all the needs we have. As you can imagine, each year, something new comes up. We have to about-face and deal with something. A big, you know, issue that I put in the slides that Denise is talking about is elevators, which seems to be a statewide issue, but big issue for us. We own a lot of elevators. The properties I had referenced looking for money for, Riverview Apartments especially, has 10 elevators on its own that cause a lot of problems for residents, especially our elderly residents that live on higher floors. So when we have maintenance items come up with those elevators, it gets costly and sometimes elevators are down for a long period of time. And then we end up on the news trying to repair those systems. So when we're doing elevators for us, it takes up a lot of our annual capital fund, which we have on the properties, obviously, that we need to get to for things that have been deferred in our five-year plans. So, you know, any bit of money that we can access, pot of money, to help alleviate our capital fund so we can keep focusing on some of the things that we do annually around the Housing Authority. And we can focus on these big-ticket items that, once you repair them, will not have to be repaired for a long period of time, will help make the capital fund work better for the Housing Authority in the long run.
If I could just interject, Mr. Healy. First of all, I want to congratulate you on that slide presentation that you did send, and I sent it to the councilors' emails. It's very professional and very thorough. But what I got out of that in particular was, is it correct that there's $75 million of capital improvements needed overall throughout the authority on these buildings?
Correct. And that's, yeah, based on our five-year plan. We have a lot of items that we have to accomplish with that capital, but not all of them get done, obviously.
And you would, according to the slide presentation, characterize about $30 million as pressing or so to speak emergency, yeah?
Correct, for all the infrastructure items, yeah.
And could you get, could you put a little bit more detail in regards to the elevators? I mean, that is a particular concern, obviously, to everyone. And to give you a little background, I mean, it's not simply to the Springfield Housing Authority, but certainly if you look at the New York Housing Authority, they've had incidents over the years with elevators malfunctioning. They've had, unfortunately, fatalities even. Where are we? In those buildings, how many stories are those buildings? How many elevators? And what's the cost of a particular, for one elevator, if you had just a guest in it, what would that be?
Yeah, so the stories of those buildings down at Riverview are eight stories. And an elevator probably costs you about $1.5 million to soup the nuts with design and hard cost, meaning instruction, replacing equipment.
And so am I correct to assume sometimes you have eight elevators? Like, how many would be, what would be like the worst-case scenario that those not working? You have one out of the eight working? Is that kind of?
So they're kind, so the way that's set up at Riverview is each address down there, there's 10 addresses. There's five buildings. There's two per building. When an address loses the elevator, they have no access to another elevator. They can't go to the next door elevator. They're divided by a firewall. So when that elevator is down, they gotta take the stairs to get to the unit. So it's problematic.
And so does this cause a lot of problems during the pandemic when people were trying to get to the hospital and whatnot? Or is that?
Not, not kind of, well, we didn't really have issues, you know, small issues during the, we've done some repairs, some costly repairs before that in 2019 to keep them running. And the elevator company was super responsive about getting out and making those repairs, especially during the pandemic.
And the other thing to mention is during the pandemic, there wasn't a lot of movement. So, you know, during a regular day, like if we look at a development like South Court, you might have like 450 people riding that elevator up and down all day. And so in addition to having seniors, we also have people with disabilities that live in those buildings. So, you know, as much as we do, when an elevator goes down, you know, it's still an inconvenience for those folks.
And Mr. Healy, could you talk a little bit about the window improvements that you're looking at in terms of the authority?
Yeah, so the window replacements at Gentile, Doug, those two properties were tick specific. They have a sliding window system there. We, a lot of residents, obviously, we don't have central air conditioning, so they're using window units. So those windows go, those window units are put in, obviously, during the warmer months. And we end up with egress issues with the fire department, with our regular react inspections from HUD. So that becomes a serious issue if there wasn't a emergency. They have a, they'll have a window unit in the way to get out. That's their secondary egress. So we're looking to change those type of windows to a regular double-hung window that you have, like in a regular home and some of our other properties to make that a better option for egress and all that and that type of stuff.
In addition to that, they need to be replaced. So it's not just for the structure of it, but they get condensation within the window. So we get ready up on that through code and our react inspection.
We end up with mold issues from poorly, you know, poorly installed air conditioners from being in those sliding windows. So you get a lot of moisture back in the unit. It's going to solve a lot of health and safety issues.
And one more question, Mr. Healy. Recently, Mayor Michelle Wu of Boston, she's just initiated an initiative to invest $350 million into housing in the city of Boston. About $50 million of that fund will come from ARPA funding, directed toward the Boston Housing Authority. One of the things that she's pushing for is Wi-Fi. And obviously, there's a lot of students, Springfield Public School students who live in the Springfield Housing Authority. You just stated that some of the buildings are 70 years old. I'm sure they're not computer-compatible Wi-Fi. About how much money would it cost to do that? Such an initiative here in Springfield so that we can get Wi-Fi access for some of these Springfield students who are in the Housing Authority properties?
So Wi-Fi actually was not one of the things that we were prepared to discuss. And that's because that's an issue that really has not been brought to our attention. Most of our students here, Springfield Public Schools outfitted and made sure that those students had access to internet. I think it was a program through Comcast that they worked with them to make sure. But we are in the process of studying that to look at the internet needs for our residents. That was brought to our attention about two weeks ago. So we're working on that right now. As we hear that there's some internet insecurities in the city of Springfield, the national opinion would be that they are occurring here at the Springfield Housing Authority. We had a conversation with our Resident Service Director, and that's the first point of contact for resident needs. And they haven't heard a lot of issues or people asking about how to access it. So we'll get that information and we'll get it back to you once we finish collecting the data.
That's terrific. I think it's an important issue, especially for the students who are certainly during the pandemic in their home in the Housing Authority and that Wi-Fi access, especially if you have to go into quarantine, is essential. And so we appreciate your leadership on that. And thank you for your insights, Mr. Healy. And Ms. Kane has a part of the presentation. We're glad to hear it.
I think Denise and John pretty much summed it up. I can just piggyback on what John said. With our capital funding sources, we receive from both the state and federal for capital funds. He had mentioned about 4.5 million from federal and between 350 and 450,000 a year from state capital funds. Just so the council has an understanding where the rest of our funding comes from. We're subsidized 18 of our developments from HUD. We receive about $9.8 million from federal subsidy, as well as 6.9 million from tenant rents. Our tenants are paying a large portion of the operating cost, but that covers the day-to-day, not the capital improvement cost. On the state side, we receive about $2.8 million from state subsidy and about 1.5 million from state rents from our residents. The majority of our state properties are elderly. We receive a Ross grant from HUD that supports one resident service coordinator. And each year, we receive for three years, $79,750. And then we also have our Section 8 program, which compromises about half of our budget, although $24 million of that is direct payments to landlords. And we also receive $3.8 million to run our Section 8 program administratively. So that's what makes up our entire budget. As you can see, there's not, the only areas that we have that could be devoted to the two-point, or to the $75 million are the federal capital and state capital. So even though it sounds like we have a large budget, all of those funds are appropriated to other things.
So total capital funding from the state would be what, if you had that number?
It varies each year, but it's between 350 and 450,000 a year.
And so hence the crisis, so to speak, that we need to pursue aggressively additional funding besides that capital fund. If I could just, a quick overview, Ms. Kane, how many apartment complexes total are there in the Housing Authority? Like physical complexes, not the vouchers?
We have 26 separate developments.
26. And okay, that is obviously, and that is, that would make it the third-largest housing authority in the state?
Yeah.
Correct. Well, I can just say for my standpoint, number one, I appreciate the leadership of the Housing Authority team. Historically, as was alluded to, Housing Authority during my time in the state legislature, and I was 10 years in the Housing Committee, did not come to the state legislature all that vigorously for earmarks. So the new day that's ushered in really under the leadership of Executive Director Denise Jordan of getting a little bit more vocal and active and presenting to the city council these challenges is very much appreciated. And certainly, with this once-in-a-lifetime, $129 million ARPA grant opportunity, I certainly think you have a strong case for some funds, some capital improvement funds, especially when I hear that the Housing Authority needs 12 elevators in eight- or nine-story buildings that house the elderly. I think that's a particular concern, at least to me. At this point, I have other councilors on the line, and I don't know if any of the other councilors, whether Zeta Govan or Maria Perez, would have any comments. But councilors and fellow committee members?
I have a, I have a comment.
We also are joined by Councilor Mala Brown. I apologize, Councilor Brown, for not recognizing you earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is Indian Orchard Projects, you guys still have that under, under, under you guys?
Yeah, that would be dug in and maxed on.
Okay. I remember growing up when I was in kindergarten, and we should turn the lights on. And I was 15, Lays on Brothers Road. And I remember the roaches used to just scatter. And we used to like, step on the roaches. This is a long, long time ago, long time ago. And it's definitely a lot nicer and better. And then when you see the Riverview projects, I know you know a lot of the Daniels and what great, my grandfather was a security guard down at the Riverview. So a lot of my family, a lot, it's a lot of history with Bud, everyone down at that Riverview. I'm just curious, how do you guys keep those things still afloat? They've been around for like a thousand years.
I mean, that's one of the reasons why we're here, Counselor. You know, I have to give credit to our staff, you know, our maintenance crew. You know, they're doing yeoman's work, you know. The money that we get from the state and fed, it's like Band-Aids on all the little issues that we have in terms of our capital improvement needs. And so, you know, we don't get opportunities like this all the time where we can access a larger part, pot of money to help us. You know, when you look at our requests, $30 million seems like a lot of money, but it's really not when you look at the grand scheme of things and you look at the amount of funding that are going to some of the smaller businesses and nonprofits. And you look at the kind of people that we serve. These are your most vulnerable and most needed residents. Our people that live in public housing, and they need help. I tell my own story. I grew up one street away from Re Village. Re Village was my playground. And I remember there was a project, they had a neighborhood beautification campaign that came through HUD, and all of the developments received tools and flowers to plant. And so I remember Robinson Gardens, I think Re Village were battling over who had the best gardens when you drove down the street. And so, you know, here at the Housing Authority, we have residents that have been here for generations. And they're asking for simple things like new paint and carpet at times. We have bigger issues that we have to tend to. So we're not allowed to do beautification projects anymore. And so if we were able to access larger funds where we could really do some quality work, fix our elevators, I mean, when you think about how long those elevators have been in existence, that means we won't be coming back for 40 years asking for money for elevators because they just need tune-ups, right? But this is, like I said, the first time that we're appealing to our city as a lot of cities and towns are doing. Because when people think of public housing authorities, because we are federal and state, they never think we're supposed to ask cities for money. They think we're a state agency, but they forget, your residents live here.
Well, if I could interject on that point, Ms. Jordan, the ARPA funds are particularly set aside for housing. So this is absolutely the correct time to ask. We also have on the line a fellow committee member, Maria Perez. I see your hand up, Maria. You can go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm glad I could say from my point of view that you guys are coming in front of us because I know Riverview very well. And sometimes it's scary to get in those elevators. The other day I was there, and when people tends to move, it comes more of a rest for the other members that live in the unit. Because once that elevator is utilized for the moving, people has to exit through the stairs. And we have a lot of older stairs. So you know what? This is the best time, I could say, as War One City Council and knowing those buildings very well. I'm glad that you guys are appealed to the city council for some monetary monies, and this is the right time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have, we also have the on the line, Zeta Govan, Councilor Govan.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chairman Curran. And thank you, Denise, for leading this agency. You know, you are so right that, you know, a lot of our residents live out there. I've actually reached out to you, and I look forward to meeting with you soon because when I was out here in our two housing complexes, I don't like to call them projects. I call them housing complexes because that's where the people live, right? And I really would love to see you guys get this money to do some major capital improvements. And at the same time, I'd love for there to be some sort of annual earmark for our Housing Authority to beautify some of those properties, you know, because that means a lot to people, you know what I mean? When there's grass growing, when there are flowers planted, you saw that as a child when Robinson Gardens, you know. I've lived in housing projects. I grew up in, on Franklin Street, on Nursery Street. And, you know, we took pride in having our gardens out there, you know. So I'm just hoping that in addition to you getting this money, which I totally agree that you should get, I would love to see if we could figure out a way to reach out to the state reps and to the senators and find an annual earmark for our Housing Authority complexes to make sure that they're maintained and that they continue to, you know, be the best place to live for all these residents that live in our city and that we serve. Thank you so much, and thank you, Chairman Curran.
Well, Councilor Govan, as to your point, I think those are great points. This week is budget week, so there are opportunities for earmarks. And further, as to your point, Ms. Jordan, would it be possible for you to maybe perhaps set up a tour through the committee or all the city councilors of, I would think Riverview with those elevators? I'd be interested to see that myself personally, not having been down there recently. If that's at all possible, I think the committee, as well as other councilors, would be eager to see the problem.
So you're actually like one step ahead of us. So we are already in the process of preparing those tours for our elected officials in regards to what Councilor Govan was talking about earmarks. We put our toe in the water this year, and we asked for earmarks from Senator Gomez, State Representative Orlando Ramos, State Representative Carlos Gonzalez, State Representative Bud Williams, so that we could get security cameras for some of our sites. And so they have assisted our call. And so we had a check presentation that was already done. And we're in the process of having, I think, three more. And so that was our first time of making an appeal. And trust me when I tell you, and we told all of them, we are coming back. We're coming back stronger. We just had to do our little pilot to test out. And I'll also say in regards to beautification, we partnered with a number of state and city agencies on tree planting. We just partnered with Arabella Insurance Company and Rachel's Tables and NOPA on community gardens that we have in Robinson Gardens. So we do reach out when we can to those agencies that come in and help us out when we're in our time of need. And we have a number of organizations that we are very thankful for that assist our residents during the holidays and specifically those that stepped up and made sure our residents had what they needed during COVID.
Thank you. I see that we are joined on the Zoom call by Councilor and Vice President of the City Council, of the Council, Tracy Whitfield. Councilor Whitfield. Council Woodfield, if you have any comments, we'd be glad to hear them.
Yeah, I'm not a vice president anymore, that's Jesse, Councilwoman, but thank you for wanting me to be, because I didn't want to be, but. I appreciate being here.
You're here with us now.
Seeing my good friend Denise Jordan looking so beautiful and, and her staff. So I do have a couple of questions that I know there was hands up before me, so.
I, I think, why, why don't we go ahead with you Tracy, just right now?
Okay, so Denise, I had heard that there was like some type of new rule, and I don't know if you addressed this already, on the waiting list of the Housing Authority. I might have missed that part. Did, did you hear anything like that, like a new rule, how the waiting list is, I don't know, structured?
So I don't know if it's new, the last, the last time I was informed of a change was I think when I just got here, where they centralized the list. Is that, is that what you're talking about regarding for the state?
I don't know, when I was in West Springfield, they said there's a new rule on the waiting list and, you know, it doesn't go in the exact order of the way people join. There are currently sitting on it, so I don't really know, I just heard that, but I don't know exactly what the rule is.
Then each town holds their preferences? Yeah, yeah, I think the only thing I can think of is that, you know, historically, our waiting, the waitlist time had been very long. But when, because of the pandemic, the state and federal government, they, they put more vouchers into the system, which then made the process move a little bit faster. Which then had some of our folks left public housing because they were able to obtain vouchers. So our waitlist started moving a little bit faster, but also the cities and towns also had the authority to.
So as far as about like Denise said, right when she started, so around two thousand and eighteen, the state, instead of having individual waitlists for each housing authority. They went to a centralized system. So West Springfield has mostly state housing, so I would venture to guess that's what you're referring to. Were you going to a list that's for the whole state? And then when each housing authority has a vacancy and they pull someone off that list, it will show up based on each city's preferences. So you may not be at the top of the list, but let's say a city has homelessness or domestic violence. As a preference, then you might get pulled quicker than someone that applied before you.
Okay, that's good to know. Is, um, um, like say a person has children in DCF, is that like a requirement? Like if you're trying to get their, you know, get in a bigger apartment or something like that?
You know, one of the challenges that we have, we just had a regional study that was commandeered by waitfinders, but UMass, Amherst, a group of consultants led the charge. So we had a regional housing study and one of the things that came out of that study, Council Woodfield, is that they estimated that the region is short seventeen thousand units. And that in order to solve this current housing crisis, that you would need seventeen thousand units and hold on at five hundred dollars a month rent. And so.
Five hundred?
Exactly. So you already know what that sounds like. So what we can say as a local housing authority, and specifically for me as the executive director, I don't think there's not a Monday that I come back to work. When I have emails from people looking for low-income housing. And so the stories go from folks being homeless with families, people with disabilities and children. We just don't have capacity, you know, and so.
How long is your waiting list?
Our waitlist for public housing can range from two to four years at times. Sometimes it's, for whatever reason, it moves a little bit faster for people that have disabilities. And when you're looking at Section Eight vouchers, we've had people that have been on the Section Eight list between ten to twelve years.
Oh my goodness.
And people don't realize that if you move in between that time, they send out like recertification. Letters every six months to make sure you're still interested. Because for some people, you know, by the time their number comes up, their children are twenty years old, you know. But if you fill out that paperwork and get it back and update your information, they drop you from the list and you have to start all over again. So you have to keep your information updated at all times.
Okay, okay, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you, Counselor, and again, thank you for the presentation. I think the key points are that you do have about seventy-five million dollars of capital, capital improvements. Along with thirty million dollars of immediate capital needs. And we certainly appreciate since your stewardship in two thousand and nineteen, coming to the city and getting a little bit more aggressive in regards to earmarks. We learned a lot of new information through your PowerPoint, very informative. I urge members of the committee and fellow councilors to review that PowerPoint and we look forward to hearing from you soon. Unless there's any other further questions from the councilors, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to thank. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Right now the chair, this meeting adjourns, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.